All right, we will open our April 18th Board Meeting today. Indication will be Commissioner Williams.
Let us bow our heads, please. Lord Father, we thank you for having all of us here today, Lord God. We ask that you watch over Wayne County and Goldsboro and all the individuals that lately have been through such, such hard times when it comes to violence, Lord God. We ask that you bless their families, Lord God, and that you bless the communities and you allow the communities to come together and start to work on the issues that are affected in their communities, Lord God, because as we know, it's a community issue. It's not just an elected official issue, it's a community issue. So we ask that you cover those families. We ask that you cover us all here that are sitting in this room today, Lord God, and allow this board to make proper decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance will be Commissioner Kirk.
I'll face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Do I have a motion to approve April 4th, 2023 minutes?
To move.
Have a motion on the floor. You can vote.
I get this thing. Bring it up. Have to hit save. There you go.
Commissioner Williams, did yours pop up for you?
I apologize for.
That's all right. And that motion pass? All right. Mr. Kirk, do we have any adjustment to that?
Yes, ma'am. Under unfinished business number eight, motion to approve a three-party grow in rural economies with access to technology grant agreement between North Carolina Department of Information Technology, Infinity Link Fiber Net LLC and the county of Wayne would like to add that's subject to county attorney approval. And that's the only adjustment.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that's subject to the county attorney approving the construct.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams? Okay, you can vote.
Under special presentations, number two is a motion to approve the 2023 May is Mental Health Month proclamation. Ms. Emily Peacock was supposed to be here to read it. I do not see her. Would one of you all like to read it or would you like for me to read it?
You can read.
Okay. Let me get to it here. North Carolina Wayne County, May is Mental Health Proclamation 2023, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong research that animal companionship, humor, spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support preventive prevention efforts. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month in Wayne County. We call upon the citizens of government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Wayne County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Barbara Acock, Chairwoman, Wayne County Board of Commissioners, attested by Carol Bowden, Clerk.
Madam Chair, I move adoption.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the May Mental Health Month proclamation. You may vote. All right.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Moving to the next one, number three is a motion to approve the National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Wayne County, and Sherry Archibald and Pilar Parks of the United Way are here to read that. Read that motion.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a privilege to be here before you this morning and share the proclamation, whereas a sense of caring and a desire to share have motivated many men and women to volunteer their time and services to the needs of others in the Wayne County community, and whereas volunteers help the sick, the needy, the disabled, and enrich our lives through the arts, recreation, and cultural activities, and whereas Wayne County has many dedicated volunteers who give their time and expertise on boards, committees, that benefit our citizens, and whereas volunteer action is a powerful force for the solution of problems and volunteers are increasingly recognized as an important partner with governmental agencies, whereas volunteers have become an essential part of any prosperous community and volunteer services help expand programs and stretch our tax dollars, whereas Governor Roy Cooper and the volunteer North Carolina recognizes volunteers across the state for their contributions to each 100 counties, and United Way of Wayne County will recognize those recipients and all volunteers at the Paramount Theater today, April the 18th, at 5:30 p.m. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the week of April the 16th through the 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Wayne County, and urges all citizens to recognize and thank our volunteers across this country and within Wayne County as we acknowledge the importance of our volunteers and take the time to officially thank them for all that they do, adopted on this day, the 18th day of April the 23rd, 2023.
Thank you, Sherry. I have a motion on the floor to approve the National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Wayne County.
Madam Chair.
We have a motion?
All three.
All three.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Wayne County.
Have a motion on the floor. You can vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and as a reminder, tonight at the Paramount Theater from 5:30 to 7:00, we'll have some brief comments at 6:00, just an opportunity to hear from many of our leaders to thank all of our volunteers in the community. So if you are a volunteer, if you're watching today and you are a volunteer, or you're an organization that thrives on volunteers, please join us so that we can recognize them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Ms. Archibald, I would love to be there tonight, but I have another commitment as a volunteer.
Thank you.
But I would love to be there, but I can't be at one place at one time.
I understand. We're trying to strive for doing that everywhere, aren't we? Well, thank you very much for the support that you all provide to our community and to our volunteers every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be there. And I'll be speaking.
Okay. All right, moving on to National Library Week proclamation and update on the Wayne County Public Library presented by Donna Phillips, Director and Megan Wilson, Assistant Director.
Good morning, Chairman, Chairwoman Acock and Commissioners. We're thankful for your time this morning. Thank you for giving us a few moments to let you know about some of the good work that's taking place in our Wayne County Public Libraries. Next week, we are going to be celebrating National Library Week, a time for us to pause and to just celebrate the good work that takes place in our nation's libraries, the work that we do to enrich and inspire the lives of those that we serve. Now, most people know about the wealth of stories that live in our print, audio, and eBooks in our library, but there's so much more to the library's story. Libraries are welcoming spaces where community members come together for education, discovery, and connection. Libraries also play a critical role in the economic vitality of our community by providing internet and technology access, digital literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. If you haven't checked out our public libraries lately, you're missing the full story.
So the library offers an array of business, workforce development, entrepreneurship programs to support the economic growth of our area, from computer instruction, networking events, to resume help, the library works with participants to prepare them for career success and jobs that offer living wages. The library also supports small businesses and entrepreneurship through networking support and marketing supplies. The library regularly hosts programs for people who want to start a small business. Many of these programs highlight area small business owners who talk about how they launched their business, their struggles, and their successes. Finally, the library offers Project Click, which provides area small businesses and residents the resources needed to market their items online. This includes things like light boxes, cameras, and other items, and that's what you see on your right, right there. Next, I'm going to talk to you about opportunity youth. As an expansion on the work we previously just talked about, we applied to participate as part of a collaborative for UNC School of Government's Our State, Our Work Program. Through this program, the library, which was the only library that applied, worked with other agencies to create the Wayne County Pathfinders. This cross-sector collaborative is working to reengage opportunity youth, opportunity youth are youth ages 16 to 24 who are disengaged from school and/or work and face barriers to success. This collaborative's goal is not only to reengage these youths, but to set them up for success in living wage employment by leveraging existing assets, aligning supports, and increasing equity.
So if you came into our Goldsboro Library during the month of February, you saw a traveling exhibit displayed African-American musicians of North Carolina. This interactive display featured a variety of artists and genres of music that call North Carolina home. As a way to expand the exhibit's reach, our library received a grant from the Arts Council to host lyrical stories, an event that brought the exhibit to life. Working in partnership with Wayne County Public Schools, in March, 2,604th and 8th graders from 23 schools here in Wayne County visited the Maxwell Center to learn about funk, gospel, hip-hop, hip-hop was a favorite, Piedmont blues, jazz, and soul, or maybe it was funk. On Saturday, April 29th, the end of this month, the library will once again host Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, Day of the Child, Day of the Book, and this event offers an opportunity for families to experience different cultures through dance, storytelling, and other engaging activities. The goal of the program, of course, is to help build global understanding. In April, Wayne County Public Library was honored to be recognized by the United Way of North Carolina with a Spirit of North Carolina Award. The library was the only recipient in eastern North Carolina to be recognized for leading through diversity, equity, and inclusion lens. The library was recognized as being a collaborator that seeks to set the example in leading through our work to reach local residents while seeking to embrace an equity-minded culture.
STEM places or takes a very important role in our library. Several years ago, you may remember, the library applied to receive, applied to receive a $100,000 grant through the state library to launch the UTEC Learning Lab. It's housed in the Goldsboro Library, and this initiative offers immersive STEM programming for middle schoolers throughout the county. Students are taught to use problem-based learning and design-thinking methods while addressing innovative technology issues in our community. Through our partnership, I went out for a second, through our partnership with WCC, this programming is designed to serve as a pipeline for students to gain the skills they need to attend WCC in one of the STEM fields. Students are able to interact with professionals in these fields and tour resources available to them in their own community, and that includes everything from touring WCC's programs to actually talking to a Disney Imagineer via Zoom.
Recognizing that learning begins long before children enter kindergarten, our public libraries are intentional in providing parents and care providers with early literacy resources and children's enrichment activities and training to help parents learn strategy to support their children's learning. By providing a wide range of materials and activities, our libraries help lay a strong foundation for children's future literacy success by fostering in them a growing sense of imagination, an enjoyment of reading, and an enthusiasm for learning. And the library offers educational support for children throughout their primary and secondary education. The programs and services the library provides are essential as they can assist in ending intergenerational poverty, close the achievement gap, and reduce high school dropout. If we and others do not do this work, the result will be that our community's youth will not be prepared to compete in the global economy, participate in higher education, or enter military or civilian service. Through civic engagement programs, our public libraries bring community members together to solve problems and in doing so, promote the quality of our community. Public libraries also support lifelong learning by providing diverse and relevant learning experiences, and we facilitate informal and peer learning by creating spaces and networks where people share their experiences, insights, and passions.
So that wraps up our presentation. That's only a few of the things that our library offers this community, from electronic resources to physical resources to programming and services not mentioned here. The library's mission is to bring to get people together to explore, discover, and connect. Our goal is to empower the community to learn and grow and allow the residents of Wayne County to reach their full potential. So now we have a proclamation to share in honor of National Library Week.
Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to reach their potential, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all, whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of the communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships, and whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, digital literacy skills, support for job seekers, small businesses, entrepreneurs, and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding civic engagement and shared community goals, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners proclaims National Library Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023, and encourages all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available this 18th day of April 2023, signed by Barbara Acock, Chairwoman, Wayne County Board of Commissioners, and attested by Carol Bowden, Clerk, to the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve National Library Week proclamation. Thank you so much.
Before we vote, I just have a few questions. Really appreciate what you're doing for the community and especially for the kids. But do you get any grants or any type of funding from the Department of Public Instruction?
We have not received grants from the Department of Public Instruction. Primarily, our grants come through Library Service and Technology Act grant, which are federal dollars that flow through our state library, but we also work, look all the time, and now we have the grant writer who is helping us. So we also look for grants from the National Endowment for Humanities, for example, the Arts Council, you've heard us say we got a grant from there, and other places such as that.
Just because we got a grant writer, keep doing the good work that you've done in the past.
Thank you.
It's really well received.
Great presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you. They do a great job. They have a great library system here. Appreciate the money that and the efforts that's been put into it from this Board of Commissioners for a long time. If you go to other communities, you'll appreciate what we do have here. That being said, we'll move on, I think. Number five, so we'll move ahead to number.
Let's hit on that one just a little bit. I do know they've got something going on at the college this morning. I don't know whether that was a conflict with Dr. Pfeifer and Tiffany being here or not, because I was also supposed to be at that event, but this Board of Commissioners meeting is the one I was elected to, so that's the one I felt like was most important. But if I could, Madam Chair, just touch on a couple of things that I did touch on at the last meeting, and I would still like Dr. Pfeifer and Tiffany to come at a future meeting, but as I mentioned at the last meeting, they're doing a fantastic job at the college. And first of all, I'd like to thank this board for, at our last meeting, providing the possible funds to complete the continuing education project out there, because it's going to be a great asset. And if you're right by it there in the mornings or in the afternoon and see the number of public school buses that's out there that are transporting students to Wayne Community College, that speaks a lot for those young people to still be in high school but wanting to reach out and take college courses. That's going to produce some great citizens for Wayne County and eastern North Carolina. But back to Dr. Pfeifer and Tiffany, as I mentioned at the last meeting, Tiffany's doing a fantastic job at grant writing. She applied for 31 grants last year, physical year '22, '23. She applied for 23 grants, received 27 of them, and those 27 grants, the grants brought That's a fantastic figure for someone to go after that many grants and be approved with that many. And also for this year, '23, '24, so far, she's already received $41,000 in grants and has two more grants pending, and they may have been approved since the last meeting, I'm not sure, but two more that's pending, that's another $410,000. And it's just kudos to their staff at the college and especially Tiffany for going after those grants, because all of the grants that she is receiving is just that much money they don't have to come before this board to ask for, and I just pat them on the back and I wish they could have been here today, but I'd still like for them to come at some point, because they could do a much better job in presenting this than I can. Thank you all.
Commissioner Acock?
Yes, sir.
I also note that they're having a job fair today at Wayne Community College, so anybody that's listening, if you're looking for employment, make sure you go there. The ice storm is there as well, looking for some employees for the summer, so thank you.
We'll reschedule them for another meeting and have them back.
Please, thank you.
Absolutely. All righty, moving on to number six, the presentation of the Annual Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC Budget and Information on Opioid Addiction Programs by JCPC Chairman Dustin Pittman.
Good morning, Commissioners. By way of introduction, I do this every year, but I'm going to do it again this year. I am the chairman of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which is a board of these county commissioners responsible for the administration of $419,000 in funds from the Department of Public Safety that is allotted to this county and goes to community-based programs to address issues with juveniles, specifically justice-involved juveniles here in Wayne County. Last year, I came and presented to you, and I presented you with some statistics. I'm not going to go through those same statistics again, but I am going to talk about that issue. In your packet, you should have the funding plan that was voted on this past Friday by the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council to allot funds to Wayne County Structured Day, Restorative Justice for Wayne juveniles, the Wayne County Transition Reentry Program, and then a Family Matters component. And I'll say Pastor Marvin Alexander is here from MPI. He is the head of that Family Matters component. That's a new component for us this year, and then about $1,500 for administrative funds, and that basically pays for our breakfast meeting, which we have about between eight to 10 times a year. Last year, I talked to you all about the risk and needs data that we had in our community. I talked to you about the serious level of youth that we address in our system, the higher level risk that we have, the number of youth with prior adjudications for misdemeanor and felony charges. I talked to you about the need for services revolving around kids staying at home, that kids have been running away from home in our community. I talked to you about substance abuse concerns and mental health concerns. All of those concerns remain the same in our community. This year, we had a very unique problem with JCPC and funding. We had $750,000 in requests for that $419,000 in funding. Obviously, we could not fund every component that was presented. The funding committee met over the course of two days. It was the longest funding committee that I've been involved in, and I've been involved in JCPC since about 2015. To my knowledge, it may have been the longest funding meeting we've had ever. We met from 9:00 to 5:30 on the first day and then for about two and a half hours on the second day to go through program presentations, program materials, program reports, data, and to try and decide what is the best course forward for this community. What we came up with from that funding committee is that $419,000 is not enough money, and so I began working with county staff, and I thank county staff for speaking with me and talking with me about these issues, and we looked at the idea of opioid settlement funding as being something that can help us bridge that gap. And so I'm presenting this to you by way of introduction today, not making any formal request or anything like that. We will do that through the working group that you've established for the opioid settlement funds, but it is my intention to guide both Pastor Ray and MPI and Community Supporting Schools, which is Selena Bennett and Barbara Nelson, to present to this board through that working group request for funding for two specific components. From Pastor Ray with MPI, we're going to request funding for a program known as Family Matters. Family Matters is a prevention program. It's an intervention program. It's a front-end program designed to help address the issues within the family that have caused the concerns we're seeing with juveniles in our community. One of the things Pastor Ray does, he currently is a recipient for what we used to call the Level Two Grant from JCPC, which is the higher level, even the higher, higher level, risk and needs juveniles. And what Pastor Ray does is he works with them on coping skills, anger management, stress management, ability to work through conflicts and resolve situations. And what Pastor Ray learned in doing that for now two years, Pastor Ray, you've done that, over the last two years, is that we're doing a great job reaching these youth. We're doing a great job of teaching them the skills necessary to be able to address these problems. And I'm going to take a brief aside real quick and say, if you want to really hear about that, Pastor Ray and MPI have the Fresh Start Banquet, their first annual Fresh Start Banquet, on Friday, April 28th. It's at Lane Tree, it's at 6:30. Tickets are available, table sponsorships are available, event sponsorships are available, and I encourage you to get involved and participate in that event, because you're actually going to hear from a couple of the youth that have been through that CIP program, kids that, some of which I've represented in juvenile court, that would have been that level of severe issue and severe need that he's been able to work with. What Pastor Ray learned was that in working with his kids, they go home to an environment where their parents don't know these skills, and so they go home to, well, not the dinner table anymore, I guess, they go home to their family, and their family is not able to speak the same language that they do. When they start talking about how to resolve conflicts and what they've learned at CIP about resolving conflicts, it's Greek to their family, it's Greek to their siblings, it's Greek to their parents, and so those skills begin to wane, and after a period of time, the issue comes back again. And so MPI's Family Matters program will work within the family. It will provide those same services, those same learning skills, those same interaction skills, that same sense of community to the parents, so that those skills continue to exist and last into the future. It's going to take some time for that component to really show effect, but we have faith and we have a belief that what he's presenting will do it, and we will present that through the Working Group for Opioid Settlement Funds as a prevention program. The second component that we intend to present as JCPC to that working group comes from Community Supporting Schools, and this is a program that, if you remember, last year I presented that we gave as JCPC, Restorative Justice, Community Supporting Schools, a sum of funds to research, to come up with a solution, to begin to look at what they can do, what they can offer. What they presented to us this year is a program called Art Execute. Art Execute will be a community involvement program to allow Art Execute will be a community involvement program to allow youth, especially troubled youth, to have an outlet, to have a place to go after school, two, three, four hours a day after school, to engage in the arts. We're talking about cultural arts, we're talking about music, we're talking about sculpture, painting, drawing, whatever it is the art that they have, that they possess, that they want to express themselves through, we provide them the environment to do that. We provide them the ability then to monetize their art, to be able to produce something from it and have something to be proud of. One of the things that Pastor Ray and Barbara Nelson, who would be the head of the Art Execute program, talk about is that the key, and these are folks that have worked with youth in our community for many, many years now, what the key is, is the relationship. What's happened through COVID, what's happened even before COVID with our youth is that they don't have that relationship with anyone. Schools used to provide some of that, schools aren't necessarily providing that, and COVID really hurt that with being out of schools and being in the virtual environment. But that relationship is what our youth craves, and they're not able to get that anywhere else. And so that's why they're going to the gangs, to the involvement, to the violence, because that's a place that they belong. That's a place that they are loved, that's a place that they are appreciated, even in the warped sense that it is. And so, again, not asking for opioid settlement funds today, presenting and previewing this idea to the commissioners, because we will be going through the working group very, very soon. We're producing our packet to send to that working group now. But it's something that I strongly encourage, beg, request this board to approve when we get to that opportunity, because again, these are components we believe in and components that we believe will provide a positive change in our youth and in our community, especially in this week. And it's, I'll say it's unfortunate that the timing of my presentation is today. This was not planned. This was planned and has been on the agenda now for a month, month and a half of this presentation. We had our funding meeting back in March, we presented it to the JCPC last Friday for their full approval to come to you. We're not trying to capitalize on the horrible events of last week. This just happens to fall in that spot. But the events of last week highlight our need in this community for something the youth to be involved in and something the youth to be engaged in. The programs that we will present to that working group, I contend, are something that the community can be engaged in. So if I have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, got a question. Dustin, on the Art Execute, have you got a venue for that to take place at, or is that?
They have a couple of different places they've looked at. One of the problems is they need a significant area of space to be able to do that with what their vision is. And when you go into significant areas of space, you have to have significant funding for it. And so they've been working on a couple of different avenues to get that.
Has the school system had any involvement or partnership in that?
Some, but not in terms of space, if that's what you're asking. They've had some involvement.
And this will be after school, correct?
Yes.
So is that something that you've reached out to them, or is that something that Selena or?
It's something that as we, yeah, that Selena and her team would reach out to as they begin to develop, and they've got a great relationship with the schools through their other components that are engaged.
Well, they've got probably the biggest, or the largest buildings that we have in the county per se, that's, I didn't encourage the school system, the parks that are just going to directly affect them as well.
Yes, we did have some, our chief court counsel this week did meet with the interim superintendent and had some very positive conversations about a couple of different issues that we're facing through juvenile justice, through JCPC, and so we hope to be able to build on that in this stage. It's obviously difficult when you've got an interim superintendent to be able to get anything long-term going, but we're trying to begin to build that relationship with the new.
I would think the board members would be engaged in this conversation. I mean, most of these are school-aged children, you know?
Yes, sir. 10 to 18 is our target population.
Well, thanks, sir.
Madam Chair, Dustin, I want to commend you. I hadn't known you all that long, but it didn't take long to figure out you were very passionate in this. And it's such a shame, you can turn on any TV network, it might be for us, the liberal channels, the conservative channels, or any of them, and the crime rate that they're reporting, and it's so sad, a lot of them are young people. And it's such a shame. And the programs that you're involved in, you're not going to save them all, but if you can just save a percentage of them, it will be so beneficial to society and for their lives too. But it's just heartbreaking to see the number of young people that are involved in crime. And it does fall back to their home life a lot of times, not all the time, but most of the time. Again, I want to commend you on it, and that kind of goes along with a program that Commissioner Williams came up with last year, our youth program for the students to, during the summer, giving them county jobs and actually paying them for it. We're not going to save all of them, but if you just save a percentage of them, it's money well spent. And I just want to commend you on, you and your group on trying. I know you get frustrated sometimes, but just look at the ones that you've pulled through, and that's the shining light at the end of the tunnel.
Sir.
Thank you.
I know, Mr. Pittman, also, it seems like they're getting younger.
Yes.
Committing crimes. That's scary. They're just getting younger. You know, you used to, you'd see teenagers, you know, or higher, but now this is 10 and 12-year-old children doing violent crimes.
So I've been representing juveniles in this community for 11 years. This is one of the things, from the first day that I started practice of law here, I started before I was in Wilson and Greenwood before I came here, but when I started here, I was in juvenile court. This past February, I represented an 11-year-old in juvenile court, and that's the first time in my career I've represented an 11-year-old in juvenile court. So yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
When you meet with the working group.
Yes, sir.
And request your funding, are you requesting it on an annual basis or over several years? And the reason I ask that is anytime you start a new program, undoubtedly, you've got issues in regards to upstarting, and I'd hate to see that we only had a 12-month window here to gauge that. So I would hope that you would ask for that on a multi-year basis.
Yes, sir. It's our intention, so obviously, these are not JCPC funds, would not be JCPC funds, but it would be our intention that JCPC would monitor and supervise these programs just as we do our existing programs and provide reports to the county commission just as we do with our existing programs. And certainly, we will be requesting a multi-year agreement for both of these programs. Our typical funding cycle in JCPC, because this is controlled by the Department of Public Safety and all that, is a one-year funding cycle, but it'll be our intention to request a multi-year. Yes, sir.
Dustin, it's a pleasure as always, seeing your passion. I see that Pastor Ray is here, I'd like to hear from him if that's okay.
Absolutely. I love to listen to this man talk. I love to hear myself talk, but if there's somebody I love to hear talk more than myself than Pastor Ray, I'll tell you that much.
Madam Chairman, members of the commissioners team, thank you for this opportunity to be with you this morning. I originally started MPI in 2015 as an adult reentry program. That program had a lot of success, to the point that one of our speakers at this year's banquet will be a graduate from that program, who turned himself around. He now owns the Andys on Spence and has been approached to purchase another. He has also recently gotten married. So we've gone from a possible 10- to 15-year stint to now an upstart and upstanding member of this community, bringing resources back in. Two years ago, we switched over to the juvenile population. After several years of requests and having to think through it, I said, okay. That was the best move that we could have ever made. That is the best investment of our efforts into Wayne County we could have ever put into place. We have a program that is made up of three-pronged components. That is the structure, because they all come with some type of court-related matter, whether it is adjudicated crime, or a crime that is on diversion and sitting to the side, or on probation. So that's the first piece. The second piece is I'm a practicing fee-based pastoral counselor here in North Carolina under supervision. I'm also in the process of working on my licensed clinical mental health counselor license that I will complete in this December. So we also have therapeutic component in there as well. The aces that are involved with these children, the adverse childhood experiences, are so significant, so significant, that they drive a lot of what is happening. And our third component that we're looking to try to add into this is family, because the reality is, as Mr. Pittman stated, we can program them or give them programming all we can. But if they're going back home, and if that way of thinking that we try to, how can I say, shape and remold, is being pushed back to the way it was, then, you know, we're kind of spinning our wheels. We have proven to be one of the most successful intensive intervention programs within eastern North Carolina, and we've only been doing this two years. I was also asked to present to the NC DJJ team for a training on what our model is, and that was quite an honor and something that has not been seen within this area. DJJ also believes so much in our current intensive intervention program that they did something they've never done before. In the middle of a funding cycle, they received $15,000 from programs that were not being successful and transferred to our program, because they saw the work that we were doing. This is a key opportunity we have. It is so unfortunate what we experienced here recently, but the reality is, we still have a chance. We still have a chance to, if not, as Mr. Aitken said, get them all, let's get a percentage of them. Because for everyone we change, we do not know what the ripple effect is, meaning, we don't know how many lives they will affect. We don't know what their future could hold, and we don't know what value that can bring here to Wayne County. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, and one thing I did leave out that has impressed me, this problem does not discriminate. This class is, this is all races, all genders, all, you know, regardless to monetary status of family, it doesn't discriminate. I mean, it's out there, and, you know, and y'all treat them all the same. I mean, it's, again, I just want to commend you on what you're doing. To start with, two years ago, I wasn't sold on this program, but y'all have sold me out.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Dustin.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to piggyback on what Joe spoke about a while ago, Commissioner Donner's The multiple-year need for the money, we need to capitalize or utilize the facilities that we already have, so we don't have to spend that money renting places. So like I said, I would strongly encourage or suggest that we reach out to the county school system and partner with them, because, like I said, it directly affects them in their everyday school environment.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Any more questions, Mr. Pittman?
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Very enlightening.
Always fun being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. We're lucky to have a great, great program. We're lucky to have these gentlemen working on this important issue, and we try to do all we can do to help. Moving on to item number seven, is an update on the CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization and HMGP Buyout Projects by Project Manager David Harris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to be back.
Glad to have you back.
It's been a while since the, been a while since the board on our project, so.
First question, have you been working?
When I could. But the answer is yes, we have. In fact, I'll start with the HMGP program. As an update, we are now down to simply a few numbers that you can keep in mind. We started with 84 parcels, of course, this is Hurricane Matthew buyout program. We started with 84 parcels, 19 owners withdrew during the period. Some actually had withdrawn before the state ever came up with the money, because they just needed to move on. That left to 65 parcels. All those 65 parcels were bid out for demolition, for clearance. 51 of them, the houses been demolished, lots been cleared, and we're now down to 14, which is underway now. Slight delay in the state providing the asbestos removal permits, a process that would normally take two to three days. We're now waiting on permits that were submitted over 30 days ago, but with two contractors working, we will have that finished and anticipate that they'll have that finished in May, June at the latest. Our objective is to finish everything by the end of the fiscal year, just be done, all the activities. They actually extended the grant into 2005, excuse me, '04, if you can believe that. But we sort of had enough of Hurricane Matthew and HMGP, we really want to get the projects closed out. And there are two local contractors that are doing it, they've done the work before, and we don't anticipate the delays we'll be experiencing with two contractors from out of town that we had serious problems with that really delayed us through last year until we finally was able to terminate a contract and start all over again with the work. Any questions about the buyout program?
Only thing I have to say is let's get it over with.
Do what?
The only thing I have to say, let's get it over with, it's been too long now.
Yes.
I have more to say, but I keep that to myself.
Yeah, you kind of have firsthand experience of all that. The next item is the CDBG NR Neighborhood Revitalization Program. That project is in the Rollingwood community. Let's see, where's my list? It is set up for, we've got housing replacement and repair that's included in that, plus the drainage work. In fact, the drainage work is really what triggered the project itself, and you can't get drainage work only, you have to do the housing as a neighborhood improvement, which is fine. I mean, there are housing needs that are there too. And let me just mention, and I'll be brief, I know we've had the length of the presentation before, I'll be back in another month or two anyway. There are now steps we go through in order to get the program underway. In the past, I've been doing this a long time, we've been able to, the regulations were such, we could pretty well get a project started within 90 days of getting an award. That is now a minimum of five to six months, and it's not based on anything the county can do, it's based on there are statutory, regulatory timeframes that exist for a number of these preliminary activities that we have to accomplish. And I will just go through and just highlight, not all of them, the list is two pages, so I'll just highlight the categories. So you'll know that when we come back, you'll know what it's all about. It's kind of three sections that we go through before we can actually get the project underway. By the way, the project's to be completed by October next year. We're looking at being able to bid the housing and the storm drainage work in October this year, and of course, we anticipate that will be completed next summer. So we're looking at it finishing before the end of the project period. The three categories that they require, our first is going to be adoption of policies and guidelines, and a CDBG motive to town. I mean, the county has procurement policies, purchasing plans, everything else. Well, now we take that, we convert it into a CDBG format. There are 15 or so of those policies and plans and guidelines, all have to meet state and federal requirements. The county has been to this rodeo before, we've done it with all the previous CDBG projects. We actually, when the CDBG DR Spark started, the first thing we did was adopted the same 15 policies and guidelines. That was when the county anticipated managing the program, and the state just obviously took that over, so there never was an implementation for those plans and policies. They largely center around anti-discrimination sorts of things, and handicap status, and age, race, et cetera. There are policies in terms of, is the county's facilities handicapped accessible? A lot of it is simply paperwork exercise, go through, fill out the forms, and the board approves it, we send it to the state, and that's it.
In other words, government red tape.
Yeah. What we have to do is go through these things every single time to see if there has been any change, update, revision that has to be incorporated. I mean, I've got templates of all of them, but I just can't send them into you, because the process is, you go through and you do another evaluation, has there been any changes, updates? Has there been any changes, updates, and so forth in those documents? And that's called the Compliance Plan category. The next one is Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. This is another one of those because you receive federal HUD money. Now, this doesn't go with other federal money. It kind of goes with federal HUD money. We'll do Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. It'll take four months, and it involves survey work of realtors, banks, property managers, et cetera, to ask questions about had there ever had instances of racial discrimination in housing, either sale, rent, lease, et cetera. We'll contact state agencies that affect. There is a whole section of census data that we go through to try to analyze categories of information. We will have a meeting inviting people to come and we'll talk about fair housing efforts. During the course of the program, a spinoff of this particular document, again, has to go to the state to be approved, is what's called a Fair Housing Plan, and that'll actually be one of those compliance items. Every quarter, we will undertake an activity to promote fair housing within the community. It may be an advertisement, it may be posting notices, it may be specific information provided to real estate firms and so forth in order to demonstrate that the county promotes fair housing and non-discrimination. I might say, having done this same process for nearly 40 years, people pretty much understand what to do if they've been discriminated against, and also understand that there are agencies and so forth that are able to, that they can go and talk to or file a complaint, et cetera. I mean, we've got North Carolina Human Relations Commission that handles all those. So it has now become more of a repetitive process, but it's a HUD requirement. And we have been undergoing these same activities on a quarterly basis with all grants, like I say, for a long time. But there may be somebody out there that's new that may not. And if it gets that information to them, then that satisfies the objective. The last, by the way, these are not sequential. We will do these simultaneously. The third category is Environmental Review. You know, there are people starting out repairing houses on their own every day. In North Carolina, there are people tearing houses down, putting a brand-new modular or something on the site. And there are people cleaning out ditches and laying some pipe. But when the federal money is involved, then there is a minimum four- to five-month process of contacting agencies, 30-days review with them, comment period, preparation of a document that goes in to describe whatever environmental effects that there may be. Once that is completed, there's a notification period, ads in the paper. With each ad, there is a, or public notice. There is a minimum 15-day review period. We get to the end, we submit a request to the state that we want the ability to go ahead and contract, start some work. There is another 15-day review period that the state has, just kind of let it be there. And then at the end of that, they'll give us a green light to go ahead. So when you, we shortcut and speed things up as much as we can, but we can't change the statutory timeframe. I mean, you start adding up 30 days, 15, 15, 30, and you're now at four months or five months. Because remember, we made the request, then we had to wait for the state to respond. And so obviously, that can take some time also. So those three things are going to be activities we'll be working on. The environmental, you won't have to worry about the approval, we'll take care of that. The compliance plans, we'll come back to you, you'll approve them. The Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing will come back to you for approval. The document itself is a process, and then that'll be submitted to the state for approval. All of that, we anticipate, have completed so that we can bid work in October. And get, you know, go about what this program is really designed to do, repair houses and address some storm drainage problems in Rollingwood.
Mr. Harris, I still want to interrupt you before, so I can make one comment here. After Commissioner Dorsey's, what, red tape?
Yeah.
What you've told us, the average citizen who's waiting on help, who's been out of their house, don't understand why it's taking so long. They won't understand the red tape that's going on. All they hear is the same thing over and over and over again. You know, so if there's any way you can educate the public, I would appreciate it. And then second thing here is basically, all this governmental red tape, how much is it actually costing from a percentage of the grant?
Well, our admin fee is, can't be any more than 10% of the project. Out of that, we will have 30% of it upfront, probably, in trying to get the program underway. And that's not counting, obviously. Then we get into the design and specifications for bidding, I won't talk about that, but yeah, these items that I discussed, a little less than half that admin fee is just to get things started upfront, and the rest of it is, we manage the project.
If you could take some of that and just educate our citizens, I would appreciate it. You know, because I, for one, didn't know half of what you just said that was just taking place. I'm still getting calls on Matthew, I'm still getting calls on Florence.
Now, this is not a Hurricane Matthew project, this is a neighborhood revitalization.
But the whole thing with the neighborhood and the unfortunate Commissioner Williams had to step out, same thing is going on there. They don't know what's going on. So he's getting calls on that, so that's the thing here. It's the same type deal all the way around. The citizens need to be educated as to what's taking place, just a simple letter of the process and the length of time.
We will, we will be, as part of the environmental review, we will be contacting the homeowners again, because there's some information updating stuff, photographs, so forth, that we will make as a part of that, and we'll provide updates to all of them.
Okay. And Commissioner Hurricane, because your name was attached to that, so.
Madam Chair. Basically, here's the money, we'll let you know in a couple of years how you can spend it.
Yes, exactly. In the meantime, fend for yourself.
Madam Chair. It gives me a different sense of appreciation of the job you do. You know, you must be a very patient man.
I've learned.
You've learned?
I didn't used to be.
I'm not.
I'm still learning.
But we do appreciate the job you do and muddling through all of that. And I agree with what Commissioner Hartson is stating, and that is, the homeowners in Rollingwood that are looking for this project to get going do not understand the red tape that's involved. So anything you can provide that would break that out and the times that are involved, so the Commissioner Williams can pass that along to them, I think he would appreciate. He had an emergency and had to leave, but he was looking forward to your presentation. So any help or any information you can give to him, so he can relay that on to those homeowners, would be appreciated.
We will.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. David, thank you. Appreciate what you do for us, glad you're healthy and back.
Yeah.
And running 110, so.
Me, too. I'm back full steam.
Thank you, sir, David.
Moving on to unfinished business, we have a motion to approve a three-party growing rural economies with access to technology, great grant, between North Carolina Department of Information Technology, Infinity Link Fiber Net LLC, and the County of Wayne. And of course, this is subject to county attorney approval.
I think we've already voted on this one.
They voted to put it on to adjust the, to add the attorney.
Is Andrew gonna speak on this, or we?
Again, yes.
I mean, does it matter?
Well, the public needs to know.
At least you'll say the same thing a while ago.
Well, the public needs to know.
So I spoke on it briefly during the agenda meeting, but, so you all approved, this is the great grant that was awarded by the state of North Carolina to Infinity Link Communications. The total project cost is approximately $2.7 million, and our match is 15% of that, so it comes down to about $475,000. When we applied for this grant, you all voted to designate American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds for this. That was a, the way that it's structured, that is an incentive for the grant, so the state of North Carolina was encouraging counties to use ARPA funds for this grant. And the purpose of the grant is to bring broadband access to underserved areas within the county. This project, we submitted three applications so far. This is the first one that's been approved. It will bring service to 919 residences and 12 businesses. So, and I believe I've shown the map before, and it's available online with the great grant website with the state of North Carolina. But it basically starts through the Green County line, goes to the northern part of the county, Eureka, and goes all the way to the Wilson and Johnston County lines. So it covers a wide array of the northern side of the county. And the first step in this was the county match agreement, which you all passed several weeks ago. And that outlined exactly how we were going to reimburse Infinity Link, the ISP that was awarded the grant for our match. So basically, how that's going to work is, when they submit payment to the state of North, or application to the state of North Carolina for grant funds, they will notify us, and then we pay proportionally what the state pays out. So they have to demonstrate to the state that they have performed work, and then we would pay that out. So that was the first step. That agreement will be incorporated into this three-party agreement. North Carolina DIT has been working on that. They have sent out templates over the last several weeks, and there have been some meetings with them. We anticipated that that would be circulated to us by this point, which is why it was on today's meeting. We checked with them last week. I emailed the contact with AG's office and have not heard back. So the deadline for approval is May 4th, so we could push this off to the May meeting if we wanted to. But since Mr. Parker and I have seen the templates and we're comfortable with it, our recommendation would be that you go ahead and move forward with approval, subject to county attorney approval. That way, as soon as we can get it in, we can get it executed, and Infinity Link can hit the ground running with their project. The other part that I'll add to this, we still have two pending great grant applications. In our meetings with NC DIT, they said that those applications are not denied, they're all still pending. That is with North State Communications and then Open Broadband. As soon as these contracts are executed, NC DIT has money ready for additional set of projects. They will update their maps, and then they will move forward. We have been in touch with North State Communications as recently as just a couple of months ago. They are currently working on a project within the city of Goldsboro, and they hope that once the first round is finalized, that their application for Wayne County will be approved. And that would extend that Goldsboro service all the way down through the Grantham area and pretty much to the Sampson County line, to that corner of the county. So hopefully, this is the first grant of another one. And again, we have ARP funds for our match on that one as well. But the biggest, our understanding, the biggest delay in getting this taken care of is that North Carolina DIT has been in touch with the U.S. Treasury about some specific aspects of how this funding can be used, similar to what Mr. Harris talked about, a lot of red tape with this. More so with this, because the U.S. Treasury is overseeing ARP funds. So there's been a lot of red tape, and that's been a holdup. Even though these were awarded a long time ago, we are just now getting to the point that hopefully they can start moving some dirt and start getting the projects going.
Andrew, come in, you don't stand on top of this and keeping us informed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Chair. I make a motion, we approve a three-party growing rural economies with access to technology, also known as great grant agreement, between North Carolina Department of Information Technology, Infinity Link Fiber Net LLC, and the County of Wayne.
Subject to county.
Subject to county attorney approval.
We vote?
And I will get that, the map that I mentioned, I'll be sure to get that out to Joel. So if any of the people in that part of the county have questions about where service is coming, they can go on the North Carolina website and see where those affected communities will be. The good news is, once these lines are down, the ISP can use that for more expansion at their own cost. So the idea is, we use the grant to get the original lines out there, and then hopefully it just keeps expanding throughout the county.
Kayla, I'm sorry, but can you make sure that our motion is amended?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
Alrighty, we move on to the consent agenda as we reviewed in our agenda briefing. Ask for approval of that.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the.
Have a motion on the floor, approve the consent agenda. May vote?
You have a question?
Yes.
Sheriff, you're good with your agreement with Puff Fire Department for right now until we can make different arrangements?
Yes, sir.
And please pass on that this board appreciates them providing that facility, because we know it's going to be an inconvenience to them at some point and some time. But I felt like that that was the most centrally located place that you could find, and you're dealing with a bunch of great people in Puff, so just pass on to them that we really appreciate of letting you put that truck in there until we can find, you know, a better place.
Madam Chair, after nine months, if our facility isn't completed, then Kyla's gonna pay for the rent out of it.
Well, I can promise you ain't gonna be done in nine months.
I think we voted.
Alrighty, okay, moving on to County Managers' Report. I just have a couple of items. Got a letter here from Faith Church, May the 4th, they'll have their National Day of Prayer luncheon. We'll remind you again before that, that'll be at noon on Thursday, May 4th. I'm sure you'll probably each receive a letter individually. Also, next week on 4/25 at 8:00 a.m. is the Chamber of Commerce Eggs and Issues at Lane Tree. Remind you of that, and also, don't forget to file your taxes today.
Thought we had to file them yesterday.
Well, they did. They was rolling today, weren't they?
Kayla, those events that he just mentioned, will you make sure they're on the calendar, please?
Yes, sir.
And if you need the RSP for me, go ahead, please.
Yes, sir.
And remind me.
I will. Mind us all.
And Board Commissioners Committee reports.
Commissioner Horst?
As most of you know, I took a vacation last week, over the last two weeks. But the one thing that really kind of put a downer on the vacation was the news that came out of Goldsboro.
Yeah.
About the death of the young person. And I think one of the problems we have right now is, there isn't anything for young people to do. They congregate unsupervised and so on and so forth. There's some good kids out there, but the good kids are basically intermingling with the not-good kids, per se. And we, as commissioners, as a community, we've got to do something to look at for our young folks. What that is, I don't know. Don't have a solution, couldn't pull anything out of the air. But the young people are our future, as they used to say, and we need to come up with something to do. And blaming government, blaming county officials, blaming the sheriff, even blaming their parents is nothing to solve the problem. Madam Chair, that's all I have to say.
I'm gonna be a little lengthy this morning, please. Couple of questions for Mr. Krempler. Where do we stand on Madison Avenue project?
Madison Avenue project?
Yeah, the EMS station.
Well, the city made us an offer, you know, gave us an offer, we declined it. We're occupying the building, we finished completing the renovations. We're under, we have an agreement with the city to occupy it as long as we run it as an EMS station. And so, until such time as we make other arrangements, we're occupying the building.
But they never gave us agreement on taking possession of the property. I mean, we're keeping it up, we're.
They made an offer that we could purchase it.
And they're wanting to sell us a building that they don't have a dime. And they wanting to sell us a building that they don't have a dime in, that the building was built by the old Goldsboro Rescue Squad with the agreement that it was, that we, the county could have the building as long as it was used for that. But now the city wants to sell it to us?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know what my opinion is. I will not, I will not state my opinion on TV while the cameras is rolling, but you know what my opinion is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and also, you know what my opinion is. I would like to meet with some of the officials at Seymour Johnson because I get pressure on the response time for the base, which I don't think we've got a big response time problem, but they do and we need to deal with it. I want to meet with someone for the base, Colonel McHaney or someone. And I know you've, you've looked at property at the Meadow Lane School. I'm tired of dragging our feet on this. I want to see if we can get some property from the base on Elm Street or Meadow Lane School. I'm not saying that we can make either one of them projects work, but I want to, I want to move forward and see what we can do to help accommodate the base on that response time.
We've already taken the steps, sir.
Well, if you are, that's fine, but, you know, I'm getting pressure from the base and I don't think the folks all on the county. But then again, that's a vital operation in Wayne County, second largest employer. And I won't, I'm tired of dragging our feet. I'm not saying y'all are dragging your feet. I think the biggest part was somebody to hold up with the city, but I want to see this project move forward. And also, where do we stand on the budget process? I've been out of place for a few days and are we moving forward with the budget process in a timely manner?
We're meeting our budget calendar that we released and we went over. We just completed our departmental meetings. Allison may want to give you an update on exactly where we are along the budget calendar, but we just completed yesterday all of our departmental and outside agencies meetings, if you want to add to that.
Yes, sure. So, since we completed the departmental budget meetings, our next step would be to compile everything we have, all of requests from outside agencies and departments, and roll it forward from what the departments have requested to begin preparing the manager recommendation. And that recommendation is to be submitted to you all, I think sometime mid-May. I don't remember the exact date. It's usually around the same time every year, but it's around the second or third Tuesday in May, I believe. After that, we will schedule work sessions that are pretty much at your, at your pleasure, whatever y'all would like to do. And then we, I think we have it scheduled in early June for a public hearing and then you can decide on the vote.
Okay, all right. And also, you know, I do not get involved in the department head budget meetings. I feel like that we have the confidence in our department heads, our supervisors, and I think they've been dealing with, I speak for myself, for being on this board for several years, I think they have finally realized that you don't put, don't put a bunch of things in that you, that you want, not necessarily what you need. I think they've got that message. I have all the confidence in the world in our department heads and supervisors to put in what their budgets, what they need. And I certainly don't want to second-guess them on some things. I feel like that what they're putting in their budgets, they need. And just keep in mind, anything that we pull out of their budgets is probably a bit of disservice to the communities, to the citizens of Wayne County. And I quit at that.
Yes, sir.
And one more thing, Madam Clerk, I hesitated on, on bringing this up. The ones that are watching and the ones that'll be watching in the future, for y'all, if you can look at me and tell I've had some health issues, we've got those health issues straightened out. I'm on demand. Just give me a few days, I'll be back at 100% and this old boy ain't going nowhere.
We'll see.
Mr. Drucker?
I, I did attend a number of the budget meetings. Sheriff, I missed yours, I'm sorry.
That cost me a lot of money, Larry.
But those meetings are very, very informative. That said, I got an email from Janice stating that she wondered whether or not we wanted to have books printed this year. And sooner or later, we really need to kind of work toward the digital presentation. One of my concerns was if it's in a digital format, that as we are going through that on our iPads, that we are able to highlight and make notes and later pull those back up. And I believe the gentleman sitting in the back of the room, I believe he resolved that by sending us something that we downloaded today. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, that will allow us to actually review it at home on the iPad and then we can make some type of notations on it. And when we're having our budget workshops, then we can bring those ideas back up. I understand that we all are going to be getting a pen like that so that we can have access in making those notes on our iPad. That's it, that's all I have.
I don't have a whole lot to respond to Commissioner Orstens' thing about having something for the children or youth to do. I've got, I've got two that still, I guess she was called teenage years. And I get posed that question on a regular basis. But the problem is, just in this case, a liability issue. You know, nobody wants to take on the liability. I mean, back in, way back in the day, we had, because I called it Lake Amnesia, it's called Lake Artisia in Dupont County, you know, those kind of things. But, but you know, there's nothing really for children to do. We used to ride them down William Street. You know, then it was, well, let me say, back in the day, they used to ride them down Center Street. I'm a little...
I'm guilty.
Then we used to ride them down William Street, then they would ride them down Berkeley. Well, traffic's so bad now, they don't even do that. And the gang, the gang problem, or the gang issue is a problem in our city and county. So, the safety and liability issue is a, is a big sticker on when it comes to having places for children to go. And I understand that because we've even entertained the, the thought of doing something like that, but the liability is just so far out there that it's, doesn't make sense. But I agree with you, we do need something for our children to do in a safe environment that maybe they can enjoy and hopefully stay out of trouble. Other than as my, about every other meeting thing, if you, if you've ever considered being a volunteer, consider being a volunteer firefighter. Like I say, it's the, it's the, it's one of the most gratifying volunteer services that you'll ever be a part of. That's all I've got.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I want to follow up on what Commissioner Gurley just said. Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, Mr. Crumpler, I don't, I don't know where we need to apply some pressure, but you know, the General Assembly passed a general statute now that to get on the volunteer fire department, you've got to have the background check, the drug test, not a gun test. And I certainly am not opposed to that, but they mandated that and now they do not have the resources to go through with it. On the department I'm on, we've got two seasoned firefighters that just moved into our neighborhood, cannot get on our fire department because of the red tape and getting those background checks and, and, and I don't think the drug test is that big of a deal, but the background checks, no, the state does not have the facilities and the personnel to get the job done. And we've got two, two men right now that want to get on our department that cannot because of that and they're getting frustrated. And every other department in the state is having the same issue and somebody has got to apply some pressure somewhere to speed that process up because we were, all the departments were already shorthanded. I know Nahana right now is eight shorthanded. Here's two we can pick up and can't pick them up. And something has got to be done.
Let me ask you a question. Do you know where it started, initiated at?
I know it was in the southern part of state.
I'm talking, did it initiate in the General Assembly or did it initiate through the state Fire Marshal's office?
I don't know. I do not know where the problem at, but the problem's there.
Well, I think if we'll inquire to see where it started at, we might understand the reason behind it.
Well, I mean, I do not understand the reason, but I, but I know the problems are. And look, my department is not the only department that's having this issue. I mean, and you know, it's one thing to take a rookie and have to train him, but when you got two seasoned, trained firefighters that want to get on and they can't. I mean, they can get, they go into a meeting and just stand there with their hands in the box. They can't answer fire calls. It's just, it's frustrating.
Red tape?
That's all I have, ma'am. I promise I won't interrupt anymore.
That's all right. You have anything?
Um, my ending comments, yes, I had the opportunity to attend the mother and son's sneaker banquet, me and actually Commissioner Forster, we attended. It was wonderful. You talking about some dressed young men and moms. You wouldn't think you were in Goldsboro. But it was just, you know, the messages were most important. It's about, you know, family structure, you know, combating violence in the community, all those things. And, and I think that we need more of that here. Thank you.
All right. My comments, I went to the Cures for Color banquet. Stayed tonight, wonderful banquet, big attendance, they sold out. So, that's, that's great, you know, when you can sign, you know, close out a banquet and sell every ticket you have. Also, Commissioner Drucker and I went to Education Outlook at the Goldsboro Event Center. That was very informative about childcare, about the problems we're having with childcare. Also, Wayne Community College, I've been asked to be on that committee for reentry, which is unbelievable, you know, and it'd be nice, you know, like Mr. Pittman said, if we could start early, maybe we wouldn't need that program, you know, because that's mostly adults. Am I correct on that, Sheriff?
Right now.
Yes. Also, they're gonna have a reentry day party that I was asked, hopefully that some of the commissioners could attend. They would like to see some of the commissioners and I'm planning on attending. That's on 4/20 from 10 to 1. I think it's on Simmons Street, Sheriff Pierce?
Yes, by the hospital.
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
Every morning.
So, and also, don't forget the agricultural banquet at Mount Olive College on 4/19 at 6:00 p.m. Hopefully, everybody's planning on going on that. But that's basically what I have. It's been a busy month so far. But if any of you commissioners can go to the reentry day party, I think that would be great to show our support for these people because they're working hard to reenter in society and everything, and everything we can do to help them, maybe that can prevent future crimes.
Madam Chair, may I add to my closing comments, please?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just, I want to acknowledge the Pierce family, their loss. It's a tremendous hit for any family losing a loved one. I'm so sorry. And to the community, this is a community effort. We can change the dynamics to the community. I know a lot of times, the first people you want to approach is your elected officials. Well, the elected officials, we're doing a lot. You know, mostly all we could do really is build more facilities, as sad as it may say. And we're building a jail right now. However, the community, we need to connect with one another in the community. We need to go door to door, knock, knock on doors. Know who your neighbors are. Know who the individuals are, the young people that are outside in the community. You know, we have what's called big homies. Those are the men who know what's going on in the streets. You have to change the dynamics. They look up to you. So, you know, you need to leave the guns alone. You need to think about the families and the repercussions when you kill someone or when you assault someone. And that's just what I have to say, my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments for...
Yeah, I said I won't interrupt you.
That's all right.
I will, one more. You know, I mentioned my health a while ago. I did spend five days in the hospital last week and I want to commend Wayne Community College. Now, this is the people with the boots on the ground. I won't go with the management, but, but, but the people that are actually doing the work, the nurses, the doctors, the housekeepers, the PAs, I have never been anywhere that I was treated any nicer and any better. And they didn't have a clue that I was the county commissioner. They treated me the same way they did everybody else in that hospital and I was just amazed on the care that I got at Wayne Community Hospital. I had one nurse, I cannot remember her first name, she's from Mount Olive, her last name is Lane. She was phenomenal. I mean, it's, it's just, I was blown away by the care that I got at that hospital and I just wanted to thank all of them that was involved.
I know it had to be good, so you won't complain about hurting that coming home that you spoiled him. All right, are we gonna, do we need to have another closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we go on closed session.
For the same reason that you were...
Hey, we got a motion on the floor to go in closed session. How do you so vote?
Still not reading our journey in the league?
No.
Okay, we're back in open session?
Madam Chair, I move to extend the lease with Suntree Foods until April 30th of 2024, subject to the following. Purchase price will be $2.1 million. The monthly rent will remain at $18,000 per month. Suntree must complete the purchase of the building by 4/30 of 24 or forfeit the earnest money plus $100,000 in liquidated damages. Suntree will be responsible for all maintenance of the building.
That's a little form of motion.
Additionally, Suntree shall receive credit for two months toward the purchase price when closing on, only before April 30th of 24.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Do we flip our hand?
Yes.
Don't be all in favor, right?
All in favor. All in favor.
Good.
Motion carried. Mr. Parker, do we recess to go out or do we adjourn? Recession. When we're recessed to go pick out our new movies.